Thank you.
There you go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, we call the August 26th, 2024 School Committee Meeting to order here at 6:03. Note to read here. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. All right, start with public comment here. Seeing no one joining us virtually nor in person. We will move on to some new business. All right. So we have our new clerk with us tonight. Melanie Kugan. We're gonna vote in, yeah. So Melanie will place Jeanne Mullen here. And we're gonna need to vote her in as our clerk for the school year. Take a motion on her position. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve Melanie Kugan as the next school committee clerk. All right, Owen Saver.
Hi.
Sure, Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Superintendent. I just wanted to, again, thank Jeanne for her years of service, her commitment. And I was just kidding last time when I said I'll see you next meeting on her second-to-last day, but she's here supporting Melanie. She shows the type of commitment she's had to our district, very much so. Thank you, Jeanne. I also want to welcome Melanie to the position. Melanie, for those of you that don't know, is our tenth-month administrative assistant at this high school. One of the first faces you see when you enter the high school, and she has stepped up to take on this role. And we appreciate that, Melanie, and welcome her to the team. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for joining us, Melanie. We're happy to have you. All right, next up is our leadership report. Superintendent Burkett.
I'd like to invite Mr. Jesse Kretik, our new principal for Cushing Elementary School, to join us while he's getting settled in. Mr. Kretik started July 22nd for us at Cushing Elementary as the principal. He comes to Situate from Hanover where he was the head principal for Senior Elementary School. In addition, he also has assistant principal experience, and he's also a physical education teacher in Franklin and in Newburyport, respectively. I will comment that both the hiring committee, Central Office Dean and myself, thorough interview process through Mr. Kretik. I've met him several times. And he's come across as just a really strong leader with the experience that we're looking for. I think a really, the things I was hearing and seeing from the committees that interviewed him was that he'd be a terrific match for Cushing. He's a relationship builder, a collaborator. He is a visionary. He's passionate about what he does, and his references were just outstanding. So we've got a really good one. We thought we needed somebody with experience to come in here and do things right. It doesn't hurt that he's a Springfield graduate like myself. So there's the pride there. And I think he's going to do extremely well. He's already hit the ground running. He's got a young family and makes time for us. After, hopefully, his family first, but we talked about that. But we're excited to have him. And I'll turn it over and say a few words, and we'll be staying around. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkett. Good evening, everyone. I think we're on here. Hopefully you can hear me clearly, maybe not. We'll try to begin.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the committee this evening and to share a little bit more, both personally and professionally. My family resides in Duxbury. We're local. My wife grew up in Duxbury, so certainly knows the area well. I grew up in Connecticut, did teach at the Newburyport, and then had administrative experience, as Superintendent Burkett had said, both in Franklin and Hanover. And quickly realized how much I miss kind of the K-5 setting as an administrator. And fortunately, this position opened up for me close to home. So really excited to be in a wonderful school community who has been overly inviting and welcoming and encouraging. And I think wildly enough, I think I've met probably about 90% of the staff. And that's a direct reflection on the staff coming in over the summer. I don't know if I would become an intermeative principal over the summer, so very much appreciative of that. But really, you know, education's always been kind of been a bloodline. Both of my parents taught for 40 years down in Connecticut. My sister's currently a fourth-grade educator. So as you can imagine, growing up at the dinner table, we talked about with the classroom and, you know, experiences throughout the day. So would like to thank, again, kind of the staff that have come in and, you know, picked me up where I've had questions and, you know, shared some vulnerability at times. And both Mrs. Tedewski and also Mrs. Boylan in the main office, who have just been kind of my support that I've leaned on over the last several weeks. So looking forward to seeing everyone back in the building on Wednesday. And as a reminder for anyone listening, we have an event next Tuesday night, kind of a welcome-back meet and greet, and that starts at 5:00, 5:30 at Cushing. So hopefully you have an opportunity to meet our incoming students, but also a lot of families there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. So carrying on, still Superintendent Burkett, a leadership retreat in opening of school.
Thank you. What is today? I'm feeling short. Shorter. So just wanted to report out, Jeanne knows in the committee, some of the things that happened over the summer in preparation for the school year. I can remember my son, when he was younger, when I was the principal, when I was, I'd go off to work in July and August, and he'd be home for summer and want to play with me. And I'd say, "Dad, why are you working in the summer? What do you do? There's nobody there." And that was a great question. And I share the same with what I do now. I think that, you know, a lot of the real important work is year-round, certainly, and it's people business. But we do a lot of hiring. We do a lot of recruiting. We prepare for the upcoming year, as Dr. Rad will talk about in a little bit. We do a lot of maintenance and preparation of our buildings. But we also meet as a leadership team to prepare for the year. And in Situate, we call it our leadership retreat, in which our central office team, along with our principals, directors, department chairs, and other leaders in the district come together for a couple of days and put in a lot of time to work together, pull up our sleeves and jump in on the strategic planning, the goal-setting for the year, setting the tone, getting our message, and, you know, just getting to know each other a little bit better. So it's a really good time for us. I'm really excited about the work we've got done over the course of these two days. I'm gonna turn it over now to Assistant Superintendent Lynch to talk a little bit about what we've accomplished, just at a high level. But I also want to say that Mr. Lynch came in and started for us, you know, I think August 1st. The retreat was a few weeks later and had, you know, a huge instrumental role in the preparation, planning, and roll out of that retreat. And the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. So I want to thank him and hit the ground running and get this going and set the tone for the year. So I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Lynch to kind of give his summary of the retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Burkett. Good evening to the school committee. Our leadership retreat was last Tuesday and Wednesday at the town library. We really appreciate being able to have our retreat in such a great setting and appreciate the staff at the town library for being welcoming and setting us up for success. The focus of our retreat, as Superintendent Burkett said, was really threefold. Relationship and culture building among our team. We have several new staff members on the team, so we believe the relationships are at the forefront. So we spent significant time on that, as well as leadership learning, content learning, specifically focused on creating safe and accountable environments for students, staff, and our families. We also focused on communication, how to make sure we're reaching all families, communicating effectively with staff and our community. And finally, the third focus of the retreat was reflection and goal-setting. Superintendent Burkett led us in thinking about our themes for '24 and '25 and how those themes can be a through line to our school and district goals. And we walked out with a way to measurably make progress toward our '23 through '28 strategic plan. So that's just a high-level overview of our time spent at the retreat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone have a question or comment? Anything else, Superintendent Burkett, on that leadership report? Or are we wrapping that up?
I think I have one more. Opening of school was the last one. So opening of school, I just wanted to have this on here. I know there's been a lot of information out, but just to reiterate that tomorrow, you know, we've got the retreat. Tomorrow, we have our new educator orientation, which is an exciting time at 8:00 AM, bright and early, prompt start. We'll introduce the leadership team to our new staff, and then do a full day of orientation-type activities for the staff and welcoming them, making them as comfortable as they can as they start in Situate. Following day, Wednesday, 28th, we'll have all the staff come in for our opening day conversation. And that'll kick off the year, followed by professional development the next day for our staff and principals to get the buildings open and ready to rock and roll the following Wednesday. For students, students start on 1 through 12, 1 through 12 on September 4th, which is a Wednesday, week from Wednesday. Kindergarten starts the next day, September 5th, and our pre-K starts the following week on September 9th. So if you have any questions, I know the principals have rolled out specific dates, times, and activities. If you aren't receiving that information by now, please reach out to your school. And if the district correspondence is not received or haven't received yet, please reach out to us as well. We'd be happy to address that with you so that you're getting the proper information. You've got to start the school year. The information has gone out. Those are the starting dates. That was the most important. I also wanted to mention that this year at the middle school and high school complex, there is construction going on for the new tennis courts. That's what I'm putting out. So there may be days where we have to redirect traffic for certain deliveries or things like that. I can think of something coming up in the near future with a large concrete delivery, for example. Well, their managers work closely with us, and we'll make sure that we make that least of an inconvenience as we can for folks. But just wanted to give everyone a heads-up that it is occurring while we're in school. And we have things set up so that it can run smoothly, but there may be correspondence going on at different points regarding traffic. And we'll make sure that we get people to notice and that we do it the best we can to not interrupt traffic on end or, you know, school day. So can't wait to see everybody in a week. Teachers tomorrow, teachers tomorrow, everybody else following day, and we're back.
Nice, good question.
Of course.
You might not know the answer to this, but I've been seeing some questions about the bus routes and when those are coming out. And I think typically, if you sign up for the bus, you receive at home in the mail a letter with your bus tags. And I assume it will also go out on the app when that information is available. But I was just curious, anyone has a ballpark as to when families might expect that?
Yeah, the mailing actually went out today. It was supposed to go out Friday, but there was a glitch that went out today. So we should be getting it soon.
Okay. Let's see. Dr. Rad, some capital project updates for us.
Thank you, madam. Chair members of the committee, just give me one moment to share my screen. So before I begin the capital planning and the capital updates, I just want to give a quick shout-out to all the custodians who prepared the schools. I've been walking around all the schools over the past couple of days, and the floors are shining, and the classrooms are clean, and everything's back in shape, and the desks and everything is all lined up, ready for the first day of school. It's a huge effort on a normal summer. This summer, we added all of the projects you're about to see on top of that regular cleaning. And I let the custodians know this last week at a training that they had. And I wanted to say publicly, I appreciated, and we've all appreciated, their flexibility. Chris Cataldo has worked hard with them, and they have been very flexible throughout the whole summer to make sure that all these projects get done. And in the last slide of this presentation, we'll talk about some of the things happening this fall that will require even more flexibility on their part. So really happy for everything they've done and looking forward to continuing that work. So as we go through, there's no particular order here, but there's a lot of work that we've done over the summer. So as we speak, all the schools are being landscaped for back-to-school. We've contracted with a landscaper. They started at the middle school today. And so I've got a couple of pictures of where they were able to clean the gardens up at the middle school. They were able to sweep and clean. They're gonna ultimately mulch and then go to each one of the schools. So by Friday, all the schools will have fresh mulch, be trimmed, and ready to go for the first day of school. We wanted that to happen as close to the first day of school as possible, so they're working all week on that. And it's a real opportunity. Then it gives a little bit of a break to the PTAs. My understanding is they have been doing it before now, and so they can focus their efforts on what's going on inside the buildings. So one of the big things, you might remember, we had a capital article for replacing all of the district switches. They came in over the summer, and over the last two weeks, we've done that work, and we've replaced them all. And I was actually curious what a switch was. And so I did what every red-blooded American male did, and I went into Google. And this is the definition I received. "A device that channels incoming data from any multiple input port to the specific output port that will take data toward its intended destination." In a district such as Situate, that's about $402,000. And we were able to do that through the capital project. And you can see, that's real. That, on the left there, that's a closet just behind the wall over here. And that, all of those wires are connected to brand-new switches. One of the main motivators for doing this project was to increase our internet speed from 1 gigabits to 10. So the old switches we had couldn't accommodate a 10-gigabyte post. And so now that we have that, and so all of our internet speed district-wide is going to be faster, and people should see that. It'll help not only day-to-day, but it'll help students taking MCAS on computers and all of those kinds of things, where we have 2, 300, 400 devices going at once. So very excited there. And I was trying to find a way to represent speed, and that was the first thing that came to mind.
Tom, is this, is this the current one?
Yeah.
This is, this was the old, this is the new?
No, this is all new. So I, when I was putting this PowerPoint together, I thought about, should I represent the old in some pictures? And it got a little much in terms of a lot of the pictures. That's just a smaller version of a switch closet. So the main one is to the left, and that's, that's really all of the switches district-wide. They're just housed here. But some of them, there's smaller data closets in different buildings, and so that's a smaller one. And they're a little neater in some of the buildings. But the main one is to the left there, and that's, that's brand-new. And believe it or not, that's cleaned up and neat, and that's what they would expect. And they've spent the last two weeks replacing all of the machines that those wires are connected to.
Tom, just a quick question.
Oh, sure.
You may not even know the answer. Maybe you do from your search, but does this, this is definitely not my wheelhouse, but does this tie in for us, increasing the speed to security measures? I'm just assuming there's some connection in some way, somehow, to having better efficiency? Is that?
It makes it more robust, in the sense that, like anything else, it makes it easier to use and more robust. But there's no specific connection to security. We have it added to our security. So one of the fun things we were able to do over the summer is through a grant from the Situate Commission on Disabilities, they were able to partially contribute to making the gym foyer, men's room and ladies' room, handicapped accessible. And so to demonstrate this, I have a little video here. It's eight seconds. Thank you. Mr. Lynch was the videographer. And then, because we needed to make sure the project was complete, and we thought of everything, we made sure that the person could get out of the bathroom.
That's important.
We thought so, yeah. We didn't want to forget that.
Budget dollars at work.
So there we are. So we can actually go in and out. So in this, we make fun, but it's an important thing for somebody who is mobility challenged, who's in a scooter, even in a cane, who can't open the door themselves, or needs to ask somebody, "Would you open the door for me?" This allows them to not, not have to do that. And we were very happy to partner with the Situate Commission on Disabilities to get it done.
I just add to that, too, Tom. In all of our conversations, too, when we were going out talking with the new school-building project, we talked about our commitment and dedication to not only fixing those schools, but making them even better. So here's just another example that I want to make sure the community understands that this is all happening in our schools. These things are very important. We have children that need, and guests that come to our schools, these older schools, that need these accessibility, accessibility-for-bathrooms. Something simple as that wasn't happening. So we're making that happen. So thank you. And I think budget generally, we probably priced it out on Hollywood.com. We saved about $18,000 on hiring actors to come down and do this. Tom, if you recall, his first performance was going down the slide at the New James Playground.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yep, so he's.
Building his portfolio.
Yeah. So we're losing it maybe to Hollywood someday. Thank you, Tom. In a round.
Let me go to the next slide. That's it. The program was so excited to be on this one. I've won advanced. There we go. So even better than the handicapped accessible bathrooms, we have new chairs in the Harvard conference room. A year and a half ago, I was interviewed in the Harvard conference room, and I think they gave me the best chair in the room. Because once we started with having school-building committee meetings and other meetings, those chairs were just awful. And you literally had to drop anchor every time you sat in one of those chairs. I'm getting into maritime metaphors, too. So you can see how happy Mrs. Patterson is, and she was able to demonstrate the chairs for us. And so they are in the room right now. What this has also done is there was a faculty room on the second floor that had chairs that were actually in worse shape, believe it or not. And so we replaced those. And then there were a couple of faculty chairs in classrooms that we replaced. So all in, we bought 65 new chairs that all match, and they've really upgraded that room at different parts of the high school as well. We installed new flooring in the high school main office foyer. So again, in order to keep with the same theme as the gym foyer, we put the same blue flooring in. This is durable flooring that can handle the traffic, and it now matches. It's very clean. And it's starting to get to a point where we're beginning to brand the high school. The flooring matches, the flooring from the foyer to this foyer matches, and little by little, we're getting to that situation. We also put new mats down, so that people wipe their feet and protect the brand-new floor and make sure that it stays good. So we put new mats down with the anchor there. And I think it just, again, it makes it a welcoming environment. I have not yet figured out what the cone is for, but every day I go in, the cone is in a different spot. So I have to ask Mr. Lord what the cone is for, but at some point, he'll let me know. But it's a fun place. It makes the main office foyer welcoming for everybody. This was done in July-ish.
Tom, just a random question on that. Has the custodial staff commented on cleaning those rugs? Is it a hindrance for them, or do they have the proper equipment to clean those rugs?
They haven't commented on it, so I'm gonna assume they have the right vacuum and equipment. That's great. What's nice about these floors is they just clean up with water. You don't have to wax them. You don't have to do a lot of things. You have to do with the regular, you know, old VCT. Really exciting project, which is still underway, is the cafeteria. So you can see here, there's two pictures of the senior dining room. We were able to replace the floor there. And so that gives you a preview of what the rest of the cafeteria is going to look like. So we did do a little bit of an experiment on the floor. If you were around in July, it didn't work out. So we ended up having to remove that, and we shined up the current cafeteria floor, smoothed it out, filled in all the cracks, made it ready to go for the new blue floor. So I just heard today that that should be in sometime toward the end of October. So they'll probably install it over Christmas break. It takes a couple of days, and it has to cure. But at some point during the year, we will make the cafeteria floor look the same as the senior dining room floor, and that'll really dress up the cafeteria. What's hard to see is there is new cove molding, and they did do some painting in there as well. So it's really dressed up the cafeteria. And even like this, the floor is at least clean and shiny, and it's flat. There are no more divots, no more dripping and all of that kind of stuff.
Even this, you can see it, and a very good improvement.
I was thrilled with even this far.
Yeah, exactly.
And then we'll overlay a blue floor on top of it, so it matches everything else. We did finish the LED lighting project this summer through a grant, and I apologize, I don't know the name of the grant or. But they did finish the LED lighting project throughout the high school. And so the hallways are a lot brighter, and kids are walking in much brighter hallways. And again, as Mr. Burkett said, this is all our commitment to maintaining our existing buildings.
It's interesting when we walked through to see, it's hard for that to be on the radar when you're not a person who goes through those hallways every day, but traveling through, I can imagine this makes quite a difference for students and staff, just being able to see better in the hallways.
It absolutely does, and it's a security issue as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure that we see if the students know what they are.
Yep.
And I think I just wanted to mention, I remember Mr. Kay's commenting on this, like, wow, so dark in this hallway. Is the light on? And we said, yeah. And, you know, it definitely impacts the mood of a place, right? To have, you know, kind of dark, cringy. You know, now it's bright, it's beautiful. And, you know, so just simple, you know, simple things that make a big difference in the culture and learning. And every day, kids spend a lot of time here, staff spend a lot of time here. And you want to also reiterate back when we, this is, you know, a lot of the monies that were, those extra monies and this committee asked to dedicate it to the high school. We went on tour, and parents heard a lot of clear on some of the things that you wanted fixed. So just wanted to show folks that we direct the money appropriately, and that we're spending it wisely. And, you know, that's going to impact learning for our kids.
And I will add, too, just timely, I mean, if you let time lapse on some of these projects with the way that the markets are pricing-wise, I mean, just appreciate you jumping on this really quickly, because that helps.
Late spring when we went on tour, and Tom, Chris and the team, our custodial staff, to get everybody in here over the summer, because obviously, things are tougher to do when kids are in the building, so.
Tom, on the LED lighting, what percentage of the hallways are complete now, do you think?
I was told today they all were.
Really?
Yeah.
I know, we talked, it was like, we'll do some, maybe some of this.
Yeah.
That's great.
So I'm really excited about that.
And it might impact the heat, too, in the hot days, right? Students talked about that, how it was so hot, and maybe the LED lighting won't cool the hallway anyways.
It doesn't throw off any heat, so that helps. Absolutely.
That's awesome.
I just think the mood in general, like Superintendent Burkett said, is definitely going to have an impact.
It makes a big difference combined with the lighter floor, the lighter. Later on, you'll see, we painted a good amount of hallways in the high school as well, and that light color also helps, so. So keeping on the rug theme, we put rugs in the foyer of the high school gym as well. So the blue floor was already there, so that kind of set the standard for what we want the floors to look like in the main areas. But we just bought the new mats. And again, allows people to wipe their feet, allows them to not slip when they come in. But I think it also just dresses up the room. One of the things we'll be talking about down the road within a month or so is next year's capital projects. And as we begin to think about that, we begin to think about the high school gym in general. And I know we've talked about the high school gym floor, but we may want to also talk about the bleachers and some other ways to dress up the high school gym, because that's a community-wide use. You know, not just us, not just our athletics, but a special town meeting, annual town meeting, community-wide use. And the gym is showing its age, and I think we all admit that. So it's just one of those things in a future capital project that we'll see. But for now, and for relatively short funding, we were able to at least dress it up with this. So between this and the handicapped accessible bathrooms, it'll make it a lot more dressy for people that come in.
And I think some of these high-yield series were chosen purposely, so the main office, obviously, a lot of people. When you think about the communities, it's a good point, Dr. Rad, about the gym. We also hold our town meetings there, so our community's first impression might be seeing that foyer. You know, if we're dressing it up and paying attention to detail there, it's gonna, I think, you know, change people's first impression of our school and show, you know, a pride in it.
Dr. Rad, do we have any opportunity to address those mats that are on the walls in the trim yet?
We're starting to.
Okay.
It depends on how much available funds there are.
Okay.
So what I wanted to do was finish these projects over the summer, and a couple that are on the last slide, you'll see on the horizon. And then there are two or three. And then there are two or three, if there's enough money, projects. One of them is the mats, one of them is replacing the carpet in the main office, it's really worn and they're torn, with a blue floor like that.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of classrooms in the same shade as the main office carpet. So those are kind of on a TBD list if we have the funding to be able to deal with. So, absolutely. And we could do that before a big capital article, that's something we can do, it's just a matter of whether or not we can afford it. One of the other little upgrades we're trying to do in the gym is the backboards, the basketball backboards.
Right.
And clean them up a little bit too. So if we have money, those are kind of the next things on the horizon. But when I say on the horizon, I mean this fiscal year. So we did a lot of painting. The guys were out there, they did a great job, they painted the hallways mostly at the high school, really dressed things up, cleaned things up, took the scuff marks off the walls, just makes it look very nice and clean as you walk down the hallways here. We have two new water bottle filling stations at the high school. The one on the right is on the seventh floor, and the one on the left is on the first floor. And again, other opportunities for eco-friendly, well, filling the water bottles for the students, and we were able to install two more of those here at the high school in the summer. We did a pretty major upgrade to the family and consumer science room at the high school. It had been looking really worn. You know, many of us, if you've ever bought a house that was built in the 50s and 60s and the countertops and everything still looked like that, this one really was in rough shape. And, you know, we're committed to the program, we're committed to what our students are doing, and so we did new four-mic countertops throughout the whole classroom. This is just a snapshot of one corner. We replaced the sinks with double sinks and new garbage disposals. And then I found out that one of our guys is actually a cabinet maker, and so he came in and cleaned up all the cabinets, straightened them out, made sure the doors worked, and cleaned everything up. So it really, it looks like a different room if you walk in now. Couple of years ago, they had replaced the floor, so that was step one, and then over the summer, we were able to really dress the room up, and it makes it an inviting space for the students. So, again, it's just another small upgrade, but it shows our commitment. And I think I heard it loud and clear from capital planning last year, when we had to kind of like wait on the science labs, which we'll get to in a minute, you know, don't let that happen again, was kind of what I heard loud and clear. So this was our way of kind of doing that, and making sure that we're staying on top of the programs that we have.
Great.
So here we are. So we are in the middle of right now installing seventy-five new faucets. Thirty-five or forty of those are water-only, and then the rest of them will be water and natural gas for the chemistry labs and physics labs. So what they're doing is, we can't, we don't have enough money to replace the tables. The article was seventy-five thousand dollars, but what that does allow us to do is replace the faucets and then selectively replace the plumbing underneath them as needed. So the plumber is also evaluating the traps and the drains and everything to make sure that everything's gonna be working. You'd be surprised what we found kind of stuck into some of those drains. So we're cleaning them out, making sure everything's working, so that when we turn on the new faucets, not only do they work, but they drain. And then each lab table had two, that's really more than we need these days, and so we're just capping the other one. And so you're seeing two water ones here, but others also have water and gas depending on the room they're in. Mr. Newton is really excited about this, and I know he is committed to, when these are done, showing us all the exciting things that they do in the science labs within the labs. And then, once we clean up the tables and everything, it'll really upgrade the labs quite a bit. And part of the paving project, we kind of ran out of weather and time last fall when we did the paving project at Wamputuck, and so we had to put this on hold, but in June and July, we were able to finish the accessibility from the exterior. So if you come out one of the side exterior doors, you can roll right out, it used to be a step down onto the pavement, now you can just roll straight out. And so that's again toward the ADA accessibility at Wamputuck, and in a few minutes, I'll talk a little bit more about Wamputuck as we transition away from the high school. But this is an exciting thing, what they did, if you look at the picture on the left, they were able to make it a seamless transition. Come out that door, and you can go right onto the pavement, onto the walkway. And you can see the guys just walking away after they finished the project. And then we of course have the steamrollers still there in the picture, just to show you how new it is. So one of the things we've been trying to do at Wamputuck, same with lighting, a lot of education and stuff has a lot to do with lighting and making sure the students are in a comfortable, well-lit environment. Last summer, we were able to upgrade one classroom this way. This summer, we were able to add two more, and these are classrooms right off the cafeteria. So if you were in Wamputuck and you're right off the cafeteria, the classrooms had dark ceilings, there wasn't very good light. We can't afford to do them all at once, and so Chris Cataldo and I kind of agreed that we're gonna chip away at it over the next several years, and slowly replace the ceilings in the classrooms at Wamputuck. Again, our commitment to the buildings that are staying. And you can see, it's dramatic, when you look to the left, you know, that's just with the tracks, and then you look to the right, and you can see the bright light in that classroom. And it's just, it makes the classroom a lot more inviting and a lot more, you know, a place where students want to learn. One of the future capital projects at Wamputuck, on the main capital project, is to paint the interior of that building, and so two or three years from now is we need to try to do that. So this is exciting work. And then at Wamputuck, through a generous donation from the Situate Education Foundation, which I think the committee approves at the last meeting, we were able to put new accessible mats in the outside garden, and this really allows all students to participate. Anybody, whether you're in a wheelchair, or even just a walker, or just can't walk on grass for any number of reasons, this allows you to really have full accessibility at that garden. And that is due primarily to a grant from the Situate Education Foundation, which is a very grateful for. So what's next? So this is what we've been able to do, and then what's next on the horizon? Lot going on in the next couple of months as we begin school. So the first and foremost at Wamputuck, as we look at that ADA compliance article that we passed at the meeting, the first thing we need to do is make the ADA, the nurse's office ADA accessible. We really were hoping to get that done over the summer, but as you can imagine, in an old building, there were parts of the ceiling and floor that were just spicy and needed to be cleaned, and so we were able to do that mitigation, and, but it took a couple of weeks to get that mitigation done. So we did it, we've done all of the demolition work, and the project itself now is out to bid, and so once we get that bid back, we have put in the project documents that we wanted substantial completion by November twentieth. They have relocated the nurse's office, we gave her one of those COVID sinks that we used to have, that kind of, you know, so she has running water, and the nurse there has what she needs for the first two months of school, but we will get this done in the fall, and I was on the phone today with Habib and Associates, who are a designer for this particular project, and they're all, and they understand that. As part of the same bid, we're doing railings in the walkways and cafeteria serving area at Wamputuck. So the first three bullets are all part of this bid that's going out, and it will allow for just that, railings of walkways and a ramp in the back of the school to be able to get to the playground in the back of the school, and then a new accessible cafeteria serving area, so that somebody could roll up to that in a wheelchair and be able to be served there. And one of the nice things we can do in this project is we can also fix the serving area. So the serving area there had been broken for many years, it wasn't able to keep food hot or keep food cold, it was basically just a container. We can replace it with a proper one that will keep food hot and cold as needed. So all of that's coming in the fall, and all that's part of that November twentieth deadline. What we could not do this summer was the big work, which is the ADA accessible restrooms at Wamputuck. It was just too much to get the design out and out on bid. So they're working on those designs right now, they'll go out to bid probably in the early spring, get a contractor on board, and again, I told Habib and Associates today that my expectation was, you know, that shovel's in the ground the day the kids leave in 2025. So I try to keep things moving as fast as I can, but we need to make sure that we're, and we're in an old building, we're in a building that was built prior to 1981, and anytime we touch anything, we have to be careful. So, and they are very aware of that, and making sure that we're taking care of it. Here at the high school, the last phase three of locker room replacement is the boys' locker room. It was too much to try to do it this fall, it was too disruptive to the football team, too disruptive to the program, and so we have spoken to the coaches and the AD, and the lacrosse program can move to gates, they can use the locker rooms to gates and so forth. That's what I've been told, I don't know where, but they'll figure that out. They're using, they're using someplace. But from what I understand, it can work, and so we're gonna, but I told the, again, Habib and Abib, who's our architect for this project as well, and I told them this actually has to be completed before the football season starts in 2025. So they know that, that project will go out to bid soon, probably in October, November. So this way, they, project, the project contractor can order all the parts and materials that might have twelve or sixteen-week lead times, get everything in, and they can start this at the end of February, and they'll use all of the spring to build out the new locker room. Again, part of our tour, we saw on the second floor that we need to get some new tables and chairs, we're gonna do that. And then tomorrow, there's gonna be a new sign being built in front of the main office entrance. This isn't the electronic one that we're talking, sorry, not that one yet. This is one that's gonna be right out here, but it'll be bright and big and very inviting for the school. They're gonna start pouring the foundation for that tomorrow. My understanding is that's gonna go up pretty quickly, so can't guarantee it'll be up by next Wednesday, but it's gonna go up pretty quickly. And then last on the list is here, the Black Box Theater is relatively new, because it was resurfaced with the, with the school, but as you can imagine, as that's being used, it got torn up, the floor got torn up, and so they resurfaced the floor. And right now, if you were to look at it, it looks like a very charcoal-grade floor, which looks awesome, but charcoal grade is not black, and for the program, they want it to be black, so they need to make sure that the room has that availability. So the contractor's gonna be coming out and just making sure that it's not black the way it should be. But they were able to clean it up, resurface it, sand it down, and make it look really, really nice. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we're at, and then of course, we have to make our apologies. Michelle Patterson did a great job as the chair model, she was very excited, she sent us pictures, and we had our photographers and videographers. So again, a lot on the horizon, a lot happening, as we've said over and over again, but I think it's our commitment to Wamputuck and the high school, and even Jenkins. Next summer, Jenkins Windows are on the list for the capital projects, those haven't been approved yet, you know, through capital planning, we'll be talking about all that in the fall, but, you know, we certainly have Jenkins on our mind, but the roof was kind of a big thing last year, and now focus on it. That's where we're at.
Questions, anyone?
I have a quick question. Yeah, so I don't, because my kids are at Hadley, I don't go to Wamputuck very often. So when you say ADA restroom, summer 2025, is this an upgrade to the current ADA restrooms, or what are we doing in the meantime, I guess?
So in the meantime, there's a student who's going to need it.
Right.
And so we're gonna do, my understanding is, there might be one that's available, but it's not like the general restrooms.
But they have something in place to support that.
My understanding is they have one, and once the nurse's office is done, that'll become.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. Okay, thank you.
No, I think, I just want to say thank you for doing this. When you talk about trying to upgrade and do things at schools, it's difficult, the timing and the fact that we could complete so much in such a short period of time, just wanted to thank you for that. Just, I guess, one question. So these are all, I guess for everyone's knowledge, these are all projects that either are part of the additional funding that we got, and/or were part of capital projects that were approved in years prior.
Exactly.
So these are all fully funded projects that are all taken care of, which is, it's awesome, it's great. If you can, just in the future, I know that we do talk about it, but if you can bring us the capital plan for future projects, just so that we can take a look at it. I don't know, you mentioned some of the things that we need to do, but I'd just be curious to see what else that currently has.
Yeah, like the, here's what we're working on, here's the build-out.
Yeah, but this is amazing, this is fantastic. But this is all really good stuff.
I have it, I mean, we're actually upgrading it right now. It's due to the town in about two or three weeks, so I'm working on it right now.
Yeah, because I think it's earlier than, I think I was supposed to disconnect. The capital plan used to be maybe in like December or January, and now with the new capital planning schedule, they're asking for it earlier. So sometimes people, I'm, not that it happens every week, but people say, oh, you know, what are the capital projects of the school? I'm like, I don't, not really sure.
What's next?
Yeah, kind of what's next. I know we know the big project, elementary school and so on, but just helpful to know that sort of stuff. But this is amazing, I'm really thrilled with all of it. I hope that students and staff recognize the changes and upgrades that we've definitely done. I'm hoping the students will.
I'm sure they will.
Right? I think so.
I think they will.
I think so. And hopefully the staff.
They'll love the cafeteria floor once that's all tied together.
And hopefully the staff recognize some of it too, you know, those that get the new ceilings, I guess, they'll recognize it and so on. So no, thank you, and it's great. Thank you to the town too, for, or the state, I guess, for giving us extra funds that we had to do a lot of these projects.
Anyone else? I have an ADA kind of question, so is there, it sort of piggybacks off Peter's question, oh, sorry. Just in terms of the ADA compliance, so obviously, our new school project building is extremely ADA compliant, updated as it can be. Are there any other things on the radar that we're working on that we need to bring up to compliance there?
In the new school?
No, just like in the other buildings. Is there anything at Jenkins that's in need of addressing or other Wamputuck-based, you know?
The big thing in Wamputuck that I've been told is the restrooms. So it was outside, which we've already addressed.
Yeah.
It was the playgrounds and those areas that we're addressing, and then those few little projects, and then the restrooms is the big one. So I'm, off the top of my head, I can't think of something else, but at Jenkins, nothing's been brought to my attention from an ADA compliance issue. So it was built in 2000, so it's probably less.
A little bit better, yeah, yeah, more speed. Obviously, new gates as well, and what about this building, any thoughts on high school accessibility?
Again, it hasn't been brought to my attention, but certainly, my eyes are always on it.
I think the bathrooms, the bathrooms, either ADA or not, the bathrooms at Wamputuck are in need of some support.
And then my last question is about the digital sign out front, any update on that?
Not a formal one, I think there's a lot of hurdles with that in terms of talking to not only, ultimately, we haven't made any appointments or anything yet, but ultimately, we need to talk to the select board, we need to talk to some other town boards. There is an issue with putting a lighted sign out on 3A, you know, they were able to get special permission from police and fire, but I know, you know, we're careful about that, putting a lighted sign on 3A, so there's just a lot of questions right now, so we're sort of investigating all of them. I don't mean to be a big...
No, I understand. All right. Okay, also, Dr. Adam Hadley surplus plus.
Thank you. So as we continue to move forward with the cushioning handling of the school, and little by little, we'll be seeing some surplus from the two schools. Eventually, we'll declare old school surplus and talk about how we redistribute all of that furniture, not to the new school. But we'll, we'll talk about that later. But a couple of things that have come up, and you can see the memo from Christine Shee and the principal, I won't read everything, but, you know, there's a Carolina program kit, a Delta flower and plants kit, I'm assuming the plants didn't make it, but they, just, these are all things that were bought at one point, and either they're in pieces, or they've never worked, or they're not part of the current curriculum, and we can auction them off. And so I think I mentioned at the last meeting, there is another opportunity for an auction in a couple of weeks, and so I can include these in that, and see what we can get for money. But really, at the end of the day, it's stuff that is just not part of the current curriculum, or it's just broken, you know? So the balances just either don't work or they're broken or they're not part of what we're using right now. There's 15 microscopes there. If we can donate them somewhere else, we'll donate them somewhere else. I didn't ask Mrs. Shi for real details on exactly what was broken and what wasn't. I'm kind of addressing her and proposing that we need to get rid of. So I would ask that the committee declare them off so that they'll give me the opportunity to sell them and do what I can do to make a couple bucks.
We need a motion to do that?
I make a motion that the school committee approve the Hattaway surplus as presented.
Second. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tom, on that, what about the chairs? Do we have to declare those surplus to the high school? Did you repurpose them?
You could, I made the executive decision to toss them. They were, they were really in bad shape. Yeah, I just kind of.
There's one right, is that, is that one right?
It must be dangerous.
They were dangerous, honestly, because I would feel funny.
Is that just a keepsake?
I will see. I don't know how that one got away.
Interviewed here, they want to take over.
Okay, great, thank you so much. The updates, Dr. Ab. We have approval of minutes here, our minutes from August 12th.
And June 3rd.
And June 3rd, yep. Jenkins.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the June 3rd, 2024 minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the August 12th, 2024 minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I have to abstain from that because I wasn't here.
One exception.
One exception. I wasn't here.
Oh, and I wrote that at the top and I forgot to put it in the bottom.
That's okay. All right, warrants. Nothing here and no correspondences that I'm aware of that need to be brought up. Any other business? Future agenda items?
Title nine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Just that there's been new legislation, we're out of the title line. So we're going to be presenting.
Updating policy.
Okay.
Maria wants to add anything?
Not yet, anything?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Yeah, that has one meeting already, the policy subcommittee that reviewed some of the, there's a lot of documents. It's federal legislation. And so one thing we learned was that Massachusetts is already mostly in compliance with. So it's just a few small changes and what we're working on is figuring out exactly what they are so that we can present them to you guys. We met once already, we'll meet again as a subcommittee, then we'll bring it for first reading. So probably not until the end of September, we'll be ready for first reading. There's just a lot to go through. And it's a busy time of year, obviously, so. Yeah, agreed.
I would, I would just add, future agenda or whatever, I know that us or at most towns have to approve their budgets prior to when the state completes their budget. I'm just wondering if we can talk about in the future or now, whatever, how the current approved budget impacts potentially what we forecasted for this fiscal year. I know chapter 70 for us might be a little bit different because we do this as a split, but I don't, but I know that they, that the governor's budget was finally approved. And I'm just curious how that impacts positively or negatively, negatively or if at all, on the budget that we've created both on the town and the school side, if that makes sense.
It does. I can address it briefly and then prepare a little bit longer response. But immediately it doesn't. So a little bit of an increase in chapter 70 doesn't immediately impact our FY '25 budget. It does however, impact revenue to the town. And so the town will realize more revenue in that area than predicted. It will also realize more revenue in a lot of other areas too. And so all of that goes to what's called free cash, and free cash is certified in November. And then that is what the town uses for capital projects. So in a roundabout way, we get it back. We just get it back for our capital items. And trust me, I'll tell Capcom exactly what that number is.
Excellent. Anybody else? Did you something? I had a feeling.
None of that, it's just an omission I made before the meeting, crap stuff. I know it's later in the agenda. As far as the retreat goes, I kind of mentioned it, it was all leadership team. I omitted our strategic association leadership, unique to Citra, I think. They attend one of the days of the retreat. So I want to thank Kate Pescatori, Kate Martin and Tara Sanenek for attending, having lunch with us and taking part in the communications bar. We believe that's an important way to collaborate, keep our teachers and leadership involved. And also I voice the table. So I just want to thank them on their summertime for coming in and being a part of that too. So thank you.